Good afternoon. Welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for May 25, 2021, being called to order at 2:03. Due to the evolving situation with the COVID-19 novel coronavirus and health recommendations from the LA County Health Department, Glendale City Council's special meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. However, you are encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It is also streaming online at glendaleca.gov at the public meeting portal. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during the Glendale City Council's special meeting. And with that, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aggerjanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. And what's next, please? Your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, May 25, 2021, special public meeting of the City Council is posted on May 19, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be community development regarding alfresco program extension, a resolution extending the alfresco program for one year.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This item, as was read into record, is regarding the alfresco dining program. As you know, back in March of last year, when we declared the state of emergency, based on council's quick move and direction to provide business recovery strategies and funding to help businesses that were impacted by the pandemic and the closure of businesses and the state and county health orders, we quickly pivoted to provide outdoor spaces for businesses that could potentially utilize those spaces for their businesses. A majority of that work also included alfresco outdoor dining that some businesses took advantage of, but primarily restaurants that they were heavily impacted by the pandemic. And the time has come up that we're seeking direction from council moving forward regarding this program. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bradley Calvert, Assistant Director of Community Development, for a report. Bradley?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As acknowledged, the alfresco program was a response for the city to be able to allow businesses to still conduct their business in light of the COVID restrictions that were in place. Also, as mentioned, this was primarily focused towards restaurants to allow them to continue serving and to continue to do their business. What we want to do today is go through kind of the responses that we've received from the public and the businesses in regards to the alfresco program, offer some alternatives in terms of how to move forward with the program. We have seen a number of cities nearby and around the country who have transitioned either into extensions of this program by varying degrees, some cases permanent. What we're looking for is feedback and direction regarding an extension of this program. I would like to make that very clear, abundantly clear. Actually, in light of some of the responses we received in the survey, we have consistently asked for feedback on whether or not to extend this program, not to make this program permanent. There are a total of 14 parklets that were created as part of this. This was using K-Rails that you may have seen installed on Brand, Wilson, Orange, Honolulu, and Montrose. This included tables, chairs, umbrellas, a number of different smaller amenities to try to make the outdoor experience better. This used existing parking spaces, on-street parking spaces, for the most part. There was a total of 51 parking spaces in downtown that were used for these parklets, a total of 30 in Montrose that were used. There were also 74 sidewalk dining permits that were issued and 17 temporary certificates of occupancies. Some of these allowed businesses to be able to conduct this on their private property within their own parking lots. As you can see, a total of 91 businesses participated in this program. There was one retail establishment, two gyms, and then 88 restaurants. So this was a program that was heavily focused towards restaurants. There were a number of different, you know, per internal discussions, a number of different businesses and operations that we did not see feasible occurring in the public realm, but restaurants and outdoor dining was definitely one of those. As part of this, the city staff released a survey that was geared towards getting responses from both businesses and users of the parklets. And this is really focused on those that were taking the parking spaces. Businesses were able to respond if they did use their own parking lot, provide their feedback on how they felt about it. But this was geared to understand the impacts and preferences and desires of users of the parklets on Brand and on Honolulu. As I mentioned, there's also some on Orange and Wilson as well. And then also from businesses. Not only the businesses that use them, but the businesses that were nearby that may have been impacted by these parklets. As stated, these did take parking spaces. These were public parking spaces that were being used. A total in this slide actually need to be updated a little bit. We did receive 1,145 responses, one short there on the slide. Seventy-six percent of those that responded were residents of the city of Glendale. And quite a few were from the La Cressena and Montrose neighborhoods. About 51% of all respondents were from those two neighborhoods. We did receive responses from 14%, or 14% of the responses were business owners. That came out to be approximately 157 total businesses that also responded to this survey. The way the survey was constructed is that if you were a user, or a resident, or a visitor, you follow a certain path and answer certain questions. And then businesses answered a different set of questions, again, with the intent of trying to understand both the differences of opinions from users and those that were, had deployed the parklets. Twenty-two percent of those businesses that responded of the 157 were restaurants. The rest were some sort of retail or professional service, personal services, things of that nature. So most of the businesses that did respond were not restaurants. We also did receive 10% of responses from visitors as well. We did want to understand those that may have been attracted to Glendale, may have been attracted to some of these locations. We received a lot of favorable comments from those visitors from out of town who really enjoyed the experience and provided us a lot of good feedback. One of the primary questions that we asked of users, those that were dining out, were how satisfied were they with the experience. We essentially put that on a scale of 1 to 5, totaling all the responses. It came out to about a 4.1 average rating, which is fairly good. A number of comments were offered in terms of how they could be improved, additional shade, especially with summer months coming, if we were to extend this program through the summer, more greenery, additional protection from motors that may be passing by, and just overall aesthetic improvements. So those were a lot of the key comments that we received in the areas of where it could be improved upon. In terms of which location they visited, over 90% of respondents had visited the locations on Honolulu and Montrose. Just a shade over 30% had visited the locations on Brand Boulevard. And then a handful visited the location on Orange and the location on Wilson. Those were not nearly as concentrated or in as significant a number as they were in downtown on Brand or in Montrose. I believe there's only one on each of those streets. So most of the feedback that we see here is coming from the locations in Montrose and the locations We asked the question if they would, if users and businesses alike would be interested in seeing this as a long-term feature, not a permanent feature, a long-term feature. We did state at the beginning of the survey that this was coming up for council consideration on May 25 to extend the program. That is how the survey was prefaced. A total of 81.1% of respondents across all businesses and residents and visitors stated they would like to see the program extended. 11.7 said no, and the balance said maybe, under certain conditions. We essentially had a comment field in there where respondents could state what they may like to see in order to continue the program. And again, a lot of that had to do with beautification, improving the aesthetic quality of them, making them look nicer, making them fit better within their neighborhoods. Amongst residents, that percentage was about 82% wanting to see the program extended, and about 10.6 did not. And amongst businesses, it was 74.1% and 16.7% saying they did not want to see the program extended. One of the other questions that we asked, as we looked around at other cities and what they were doing, as they were extending the program, many were improving upon these parklets. As you can see, this is an example, kind of built up on a platform, becoming a true parklet in the sense of what we may see in Long Beach and other cities like that. So we had asked respondents whether or not this is something they may aspire to see the parklet program become, regardless of length, regardless if we were going to extend this for six months, 12 months, whatever that may be. Is this something that was befitting of those kind of aesthetic enhancements that users may want to see? From that, 87% of all respondents said yes. Amongst residents, it was 87.6%. Amongst businesses, it was actually 90.8% interested in seeing this become, or seeing this be a potential aspiration for the alfresco program. Now, there would be impacts and outcomes to this if we were to extend this program. Parking is the most prevalent. That is one that we have heard comments from. I know that you have received several emails and communications from various businesses expressing their concern over parking. This really focused towards retail, using those parking spaces that are on common streets such as Honolulu, where someone who may be pulling up to a business just to pick something up may not be able to do that because a parking space is being taken for that outdoor dining. So overall, a loss of parking spaces, as we acknowledged, about 50 in downtown and another 30 in Montrose are currently being used for these parklets. That also leads to parking revenue, which I'll touch on in a minute. There would be a loss of parking revenue because of that, and that would have an impact to the general fund. Some other concerns that have been raised, both in the survey and just in general from the public, are ADA-related. I would like to make it clear that we are not using ADA parking spaces for these parklets. No ADA parking spaces have been taken out of circulation in order to establish any of the parklets. Right now, we do not have to require that the parklets provide ADA accessibility, as long as there's a reasonable accommodation. And that has been achieved through outdoor dining that's on the sidewalks. An example would be, based in 141, and Montrose has a couple tables alongside their storefront, and that would be considered a reasonable accommodation for ADA accessibility, therefore not requiring that the area down within the parking would have to be ADA accessible. With that being said, if this were to be extended or turned into a long-term program, and we were to improve these per the image that we use, the kind of aspirational image, that by default would become ADA accessible, because that would be raised up, it would be flush with the curb. Anyone who may be experiencing any sort of mobility challenges would be able to walk right onto that parklet. So again, we have not impeded on any ADA parking spaces. We are meeting ADA requirements in terms of how the configuration is set up now. And if this program were to advance into something a little more refined, we would also be able to meet ADA requirements. In terms of fiscal impact, part of this program, and part of the request here this afternoon, is whether or not council would wish to continue to waive the associated fees with outdoor sidewalk dining and these parklets. It's estimated that about $118,660 in fees were waived. Now, that does not mean that's necessarily an economic loss for the city. Those may have been permits that no one would have applied for before if there was not COVID and we were not doing this program. But that is the dollar amount that is reflected in terms of the fees that have been waived. And part of the question this afternoon is whether or not council would like to see those fees continue to be waived if there was an extension of this program. It's estimated that the parking fund impact is about $500,000. A bulk of that is coming from downtown, over $300,000 from those parking spaces, mainly because of higher use and higher parking rates as well. But there would also be a fiscal impact from the parking spaces on Honolulu and Montrose as well. If we were to pursue improvements of these, we have about $200,000 at our disposal for the program. We've used about $226,000 now in terms of the current installations. There is another $200,000 still available in funding to improve these. We estimate to make these into something like you may see in the background image here, that more aspirational goal would cost somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000, depending on the size, depending on a number of conditions. But that is consistent with what we've seen in other cities and what they have spent on these programs, such as Long Beach. Some of the surrounding cities and what they have done, Pasadena has extended their program until December 30 of 2021. Burbank has extended theirs until December 31 of 2021. Manhattan Beach currently plans to continue their program through the summer. San Diego is exploring an extension and possibly making part of their program permanent along Fifth Avenue in the Gaslamp District, or Gaslamp Quarter. Santa Barbara has elected to make their program permanent, including partial closure of the streets. And then also looking at how they can aesthetically improve these as well, trying to be a little more compatible in terms of their design and the surrounding environment. And then Long Beach, a program that we've often looked at for inspiration on this, this is a program that has existed for them prior to COVID. This is a grant program. They work with businesses who request these. In some cases, they use parking spaces. In other areas, they use kind of dead space between the lanes and curb. So the alternatives presented to council this afternoon, alternative one, an option to extend the alfresco program for one year and to continue to waive the associated fees. Alternative two could look at any other specified term and not waive the fees. If council desired to extend this program through the summer for six months, whatever that may be. Alternative three would to allow the program to terminate on June 30, 2021, consistent of the emergency orders related to COVID-19. And then alternative four, any other alternative not proposed by staff. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Calvert. I'll take questions from my colleagues, and then I'm sure we have phone calls, and we'll take those. So just questions rather than comments at this point. Councilmember Aggerjanian?
My question is, this two major shopping places, Montrose and Brand, let's say, or Glendale, are two different places. Why it has been considered together? That's my question. Because they're not similarly situated businesses. They're very different. So we cannot take entire the city and come up to a conclusion. So I want to see why it was not separated.
In my apologies, that's something I should have mentioned earlier on. It's not an all-or-nothing deal in terms of this. If council would prefer to parse out the two primary areas where these parklets are located, that is, could also be one of those alternatives considered by council. It could be extended in different fashions on whether it's Brand or Honolulu, but that would ultimately be up to council's discretion on how to extend that. You may wish to extend it in one area and not in another, and that would be one of the potential alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian?
I know this issue has come up, but can you please explain the involvement of the various associations, whether it's the Montrose Shopping Park Association or Downtown Glendale Association, in conducting these surveys, how you communicated with them that this was coming about and how we were doing this?
We primarily communicated the survey through our social media, Choose Glendale, the Choose Glendale website. We also had city staff go to both locations, and they created QR codes on cards that businesses could put outside their windows, outside their tables, in order to kind of quick, offer kind of quick access. We did not work with any of the associations to actually develop the survey. Part of that is because they were going to be responding to the survey, and having them help create the questions that they would be answering would lead to, essentially, leading questions, ones that would have predetermined outcomes.
Sure. And I understand that, just that some of the merchants' associations, at least one, has expressed concern that the first they heard about this was when the survey was rolled out. I think it would be, we would be well-served to do some advanced outreach to them, to let them know what's coming down the pipeline, particularly in something that's going to impact them. I think it's important, and I think it's a good lesson learned in terms of how we conduct our community outreach with our stakeholders. In terms of the ADA compliance, I was having lunch in Los Angeles when I saw a couple of restaurateurs coming out with a tape measure, measuring the heights of their tables. And upon inquiry, I was told that, they informed me that they had been served with a notice of not being ADA, the tables not being ADA compliant. And so I've raised this issue with our city manager, and I want to bring it to staff's attention, to let restaurants know that there is this possibility of the spaces outdoors running into ADA compliance issues. And with that regard, I know some of it is probably on the restaurant owner who is providing their own tables and chairs. But my understanding is that we've also provided tables and chairs, correct? So I'd like to ensure that if we are doing that, we're at least crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and making sure that we're following whatever laws that don't put us in a position where we're liable. So I don't know if that has come to your attention, if you've heard about it, but I think word of it, like a lot of these lawsuits and these cases that are brought against businesses, could travel fast. And I hate to see after everything that we've been through, and the restaurants and businesses have been through, to yet have another bureaucratic obstacle to overcome.
Madam, let's see, we are City Council. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Kusakian. We did consult with the building official, and as Mr. Calvert said, those tables do provide a reasonable accommodation. They're unlike the countertops that do need to be a little bit lower in some cases. The tables that are set out on the sidewalks in our program do meet that height requirement.
Good. It's good to hear. Are we going to convey that to also the merchants who may not be aware of it, who may want to expand and are excited about the warm weather that's coming, and the possibilities of an extension of this program?
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Brotman?
Yes, Mayor Devine? Yeah, hi. A couple of things, Bradley. Firstly, you mentioned that we have this $200,000 budget remaining for improvements. And I didn't quite catch, so the cost of, if we were to take one parklet and develop it into something like the pictures you showed us, which you call the aspirational design, about how much would that cost for one?
Depending on the size, somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000.
Okay. And $10,000 to $20,000. And how many of them do we, how, I know you said we have 14 parklets. How many are in on Brand, and how many in Montrose?
Currently, there are, my apologies, six locations in Montrose. The balance are located downtown. Now, one downtown has been removed since, and the one near Buffalo Wild Wings.
Montrose has six, you're saying. And then Brand would have, what would that be?
There's about 11 remaining there, because you have one on Orange and one on Wilson as well.
Okay. Well, wait a minute. 14 altogether, right?
Correct. 13 remaining, 14 were deployed.
14, 13 remaining. Okay. So then that would be six in Montrose, and then seven, you're saying? Seven on Brand?
There's five on Brand.
Five on Brand, okay. So if we were to go ahead and do, let's say we decided that we wanted to go ahead and do the ones on Brand, you know, upgrade them and make them level with the curb and everything like that, we would have, we would have enough, we would have enough in our, in our account to do that?
We are estimating so, yes.
Okay. So that was one question. The other thing was, you know, we've all seen concerns about parking on Honolulu. And I know we did a traffic study. If you could just run through, I think it was, what, two years ago, and I believe what it said was we had ample parking so long as people were willing to walk a couple blocks. I think the parking is to the north, primarily to the north of Honolulu on Florencita. But maybe you could just walk through what that study told us and what the parking situation is based on the work we did.
Sure. There was a parking study that was conducted. I'm trying to remember all of the outcomes from that. But in summary, it was determined that there was enough parking. Yes, you would have to walk from that parking lot off Florencita, but there was enough parking provided to the general area.
I'd also, Madam Mayor--
And--
I'm sorry, Councilmember Brotman, wanted to add their parking lots, surface parking lots, south of Honolulu Avenue as well.
So if we were to lose the 30 parking spots, I mean, maybe this is something you can't answer now, and it could be something we ask you to come back with, but to relook at that study and see what that, you know, how we would deal with the loss of 30 parking spots, because those are, you know, prime, obviously, prime street parking spots in front of businesses, whether we would take the remaining ones and maybe make, you know, make more of them for handicapped use, or what, you know, what the options would be. So maybe, if you don't have the answers to that, we can, we can maybe address that later.
I don't think we would be able to say what the actual impacts are today, but I think any extension of this program, whether it's three months or 12 months, during that period of time, we would be studying and analyzing that, so that when we would return at a subsequent point after that, if there's another consideration to extend, we would be able to understand those true impacts under more normal conditions. We weren't necessarily able to do that over the course of the past year, because again, the conditions weren't normal. But as we're all aware, they're going to return to normalcy here relatively soon. During that time, we would use that to study, collect data, and understand what those impacts are. We have heard those concerns that maybe that'll impact retail. Is there going to be enough parking or not? And those are all data points that we would like to collect during that time if the program is extended, so that we could come back and provide a summary of what those true impacts really were.
Okay. And how we might mitigate them and all that?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have--
Councilmember Najarian, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. My question is, I know that we have, we've had heard, we have heard from the Montrose Shopping Park Association. What do we hear from the Greater Downtown Business Association?
We have heard support thus far for the program.
For the downtown area. Okay. All right. I don't think we have any more questions, so let's go to the callers.
Gigi Garcia, you're live. You have three minutes, Gigi.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Devine and council members, for hearing me today. As a resident business owner and vice president of the Montrose Shopping Park Association, I would like to share my position on the parklets in Montrose. I would like to share my position on the parklets in Montrose. In late spring of 2020, the city contacted the MSPA regarding the parklet program in order to help our restaurants. We hesitated because parking has always been a problem in the shopping park for many years. We agreed eventually, and it was a worthwhile, short-term solution. We worked with the city and the merchants, both restaurants, retail, and service, to get them to agree to the program. Some restaurants didn't even want it, and they finally came on board later in the game. Many retailers had to be convinced, because it took up valuable parking, and they were told by the city that it would be only for a few, a few months, a temporary sacrifice. The program has already been extended several times and has accomplished its purpose, keeping restaurants afloat and to throw them a lifeline. It is now time to look at alternatives that will help all of our merchants. A lifeline has now been be extended to all MSPA business owners, including service and retail. I think the parklets should not be pulled in June, but run through the summer, mid to late August, and then be removed. We should then expand patio dining. Maybe the city could offer the restaurants some extended patio permits for a year, or again, work with the MSPA to do a long-term permanent plan that does not encroach on valuable storefront parking. We can do better than parklets. This would, this would return all parking to the merchants and not just benefit a select few. We all pay taxes here and assessments. When I leased my shop, I selected my location knowing the amount of parking my customers would have available. This is one reason I chose Montrose and my space. Having all of our parking back to pick up a quick gift, an ice cream cone, or even a restaurant-to-go order will be critical for fourth quarter. Many retailers and service businesses will not survive without a great fourth quarter this year. Please do not cater to one type of business, please help us all. The MSPA Board is an elected board of volunteer merchants, elected by the merchants of Montrose to represent the BID. We do our best to make equitable decisions for all 180 merchants, not just a select few. Sometimes we have to make decisions that may be unpopular for some, as you all well know, being public servants yourself. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Next.
Maureen Palacios. Maureen, you're live. Maureen, you have three minutes.
Thank, thank you. Hello, Mayor Devine, city council members and staff. I'm Maureen Palacios, owner of Once Upon a Time Children's Bookstore, located in Montrose for 55 years. I would like to focus this discussion on only Montrose. The places where parklets are located throughout the city are very, very different in terms of street width, traffic patterns, and so much more. So I am imploring you to not bunch Montrose in with any other area of the city, as this alfresco program is not really one size fits all. So making the parklets permanent will be detrimental to my nationally-known business. When we lease, as Gigi said before, when we lease our space, we are fully aware of where the valuable parking spaces are or aren't for some spaces. This is all known upfront. And as the city very much knows, you charge new businesses a minimum of $6,000 for a parking waiver. Again, because you know their business will adversely impact the lack of already limited parking in Montrose. Taking away these valuable spaces and giving them, well, giving them away or even charging them to restaurants is not equitable. Why are you singling out restaurants at the expense of retailers? Sure, the parklets helped the restaurants during the pandemic, but now that the county is opening up, each business entity can go back to a more normal way of operating. And maybe you could extend the parklets for a couple more months to ease back into normal. If you were to allow the restaurants to have parklets, who are you benefiting? On my block, I have a brand-new, soon-to-be-open restaurant on one side that hasn't been open for almost nine years. Do they rate for a parklet? And then on my other side, Zeeks, who has been closed since March, are they also going to ask for a parklet too? Why would the parklets only benefit, as they do now, 5% of MSPA merchants? Please rethink this parklet issue for Montrose specifically, and work with the merchants, all of us, retailers, service providers, and restaurants, who have had their livelihoods disrupted during this pandemic and want to continue operating a successful business in our city and specifically in MSPA. We aggregate our assessments to benefit all merchants. So the city should follow suit and ensure policies are transparent and benefit all merchants in an equitable manner. I would welcome and look forward to working with my fellow MSPA merchants and the city to ensure that that takes place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Joe Stiddick. Joe, you're live. You have three minutes, Joe.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and city council member and staff members. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Good, okay. I'm having a challenging time hearing all the council members when they speak. Obviously, from our perspective, retaining the parklet dining, outdoor dining, and access facilities are important to all the businesses in downtown Glendale. It just, it doesn't segregate out just restaurants, because it really applies to all, because people come to eat in downtown Glendale, and they also go to the stores afterwards or even before to partake in shopping. Now that the moratorium is going to be lifted, we think that will even improve. When we polled our, our tenancies in downtown Glendale, with very, very few exceptions, everyone endorsed continuing the parklet program for at least a year. And I think that would allow the city to, and the GDDGA to do a number of things. One, to evaluate the efficiency and the use of the parklets, number one. Number two, what the economic impact is in terms of increased sales and sales tax dollars arising to the city from the use of those parklets by virtue of sales, which would help offset some of the costs of loss of revenue for the parking. And I do believe it's very important to distinguish between Montrose and downtown Glendale, as they're two different environments with two different sets of really user types, although there's commonality. But Montrose, it tends to be a much later-at-night and early-evening situation. And Glendale is turning into more of an 18, and has turned into more of an 18-hour environment, which would allow people to stay downtown until 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, and the restaurants can stay open till then. And we're starting to see that. So things are improving. The GDDGA did provide a number of tables, chairs, and canopies for the benefit of merchants in the downtown Glendale area, and will continue to do that. They funded that, they helped distribute them, they helped provide access to them, and they helped secure them at night, because they all need to be locked up at night. So if I was to look at the four alternatives that were suggested by Bradley, I would suggest alternative number one, give us a year to flush this program out, to vet the different aspects of it, to see what the impact is economically, not only for the merchants and for the restaurant owners that have all struggled for the last 12 to 18 months, and allow the city to evaluate the cost facilities for providing this, and for all of us to collectively, and I endorse the concept of bringing into the, again, to the stakeholders to help make decisions or at least provide information in terms of progress and direction of the program, to help formulate and revise these programs so they maximize the benefit of all those folks that are involved, not only the stakeholders, but the businesses, but the city, because everybody's making some sacrifice with this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe, can I ask you a question, Mr. Stiddick? Have, in your surveys that you've taken, or your survey, did you get any pushback from businesses that they were being hampered or negatively impacted by these, this alfresco dining?
Well, the reality is, is a lot of the businesses couldn't operate anyway because of the constraints, the requirements for participation, number of participants that they could have, or customers they could have in their locations. We had some, and it was minor, relatively speaking. I mean, you always have differences of opinion as to how effective a program's going to be. But the consensus is, along the boulevard in the downtown Glendale area, is that this is a positive program, because it's bringing people back downtown and having people come into downtown, whether they're here for restaurants and then they subsequently, either prior to or after, do some retail shopping. And that benefits the community in general.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next caller?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next caller?
Duarte Gervais. Duarte?
Hello, Mayor, and city council members and city staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a retail business owner on Honolulu in a really small store at the 2,400 block, where all but our handicap parking space has been impacted by the alfresco dining program. And my opinion is, is that we've all been through a really long, hard year and a half now, and not all receiving PPP support or any of the other grants that were out there. And these little businesses are really struggling. What we do need is our parking back returned to normal, as well as these barriers that are blocking visibility to our little shops. I think that the city's Department of Engineering Outdoor Dining Program is sufficient. I think that a lot of these retail businesses who have been required to secure a parking reduction permit and other entitlements are really kind of slapped in the face at this time. I support our restaurants, and I'm very proud to be in a neighborhood that has such a great assortment of restaurants. And we do piggyback on each other as far as client base. But I think it's time to support these micro, small businesses, the mom-and-pop shops, returning our parking back and removing those barriers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller? Do we have another one?
Andre Ordubegyan. Andre, you're live. Go ahead. Andre, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, council member and council staff. Thank you very much for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to mention that I've been in the business 30 years here in Montrose, and I'm also a resident of Glendale. For the past 30 years, the biggest obstacles we had in Montrose was parking structures. And when I hear that, saying that parking is adequate in Montrose, it cannot be far from truth. And I think you guys are forgetting about the GCC buying the Citibank Building, and they're planning on setting up a campus in town, which is going to cater over 200-plus students plus faculty, that they all going to need parking. And they were very nice, and they were trying to work with Montrose Shopping Park Association to find a solution for that. And on top of that, all the other businesses that they're coming in town, and they're trying to set their businesses up, they all require parkings. And those two parking lots, number three and seven, are not adequate whatsoever to accommodate everybody, our visitors, our merchants, our employees, and whoever comes to town. So I am against the parklets to extend for another year. Will be gladly to help till mid-August. And after that, I think they need to be pulled back out and then try to help all the merchants, the 175 merchants that exist here in Montrose, not only select a few, that, you know, they all need to be able to sustain existence and continue doing their business as they used to for years. So that's, that's all I have to say. I hope that you can consider that, and, you know, don't make something like this permanent on a small, narrow street that it's just impossible to maneuver and do business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marco Lamandri. Marco, you're live. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Marco Lamandri, the Downtown Glendale Association Executive Director. So I would like to thank you, Mayor Devine, and city council members and city staff for giving us the opportunity to respond. I would like to support alternative number one, and I'll just make a few points, because I think President Joe Stiddick did a really good job of giving an overview. First, there's a great quote on Lincoln Road in South Beach in Miami that says, the reason why they closed Lincoln Road, which is a very famous street, is because a car never bought anything. And I think that that's extremely relevant here. We know that we need the restaurants that suffered tremendously, and the cafes, and the other food facilities over the last year, they need to make up for lost revenue. And the one year after June 15th, in our mind, seems to make a lot of sense, and we believe it's reasonable. We also know that, unlike on Montrose, there are multiple parking structures in downtown that the city council invested in in the 1980s and the 1990s. And so parking, people might not be able to park right in front of their spot, but they can't do that now, because it's a very popular shopping district, and they will walk a few blocks for that. We also have a great microclimate in downtown Glendale. In the evening hours, it's wonderful to sit outside. City of San Francisco has made the outdoor dining permanent. City of San Diego just voted to extend it at a minimum for another year, and they're setting up a program that will allow for permanent vacating of the parking structures based upon state and local codes. So at a minimum, we would like the council to support the use of the outdoor parking spaces adjacent to retailers, restaurants, cafes, et cetera. And we would strongly encourage the council to support alternative one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Marco.
Mayor, that was the final caller.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a question, if I may. Do we have any idea when GCC is going to actually move up there and start parking all of these cars that may impact the parking? No, we don't have a time certain, date certain?
No, we apologize, Madam Mayor, we don't have that information.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, then, I'll open it up to my colleagues then, if, for comments, and how you, how you feel about the extension, how long? And also, oh, I have a question on the waiving the fees if no one else does. How's that going to work? If we decide today to not waive the fees for these alfresco locations, will the restaurants will have to start paying for the ability to use them?
If they wish to keep, yes.
If they wish to keep them. Do you see that as a way of, of kind of gaining information as to who really wants it and who doesn't?
I think that would be difficult to say.
Is this a way of finding out?
I think it'd be reasonable to assume that it may discourage some from participating.
And I'm interested in what the fee would be, but go ahead, Mr. Lanzafim.
I was just going to say, I'm willing to bet that the fee is low enough that all the restaurants would want to do it. Even if they could go back to 100%, this would allow them some extra capacity to then make up for their loss last year. So my guess is that they would want to come along. Want to say, in, this would be a outside dining permit, I believe is what we did for them. About $250. You need to get approval from Public Works and name the city as an additional insured.
Okay, so it would be $250 per restaurant if we decide not to waive the fees?
And it's an annual fee.
Sorry.
Sorry, annual fee.
Yes, $250 annual fee.
Plus $223 per square foot of the actual space, so it, it would go above the $223 initial fee.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Rogajanian?
I just, I don't want to look at this, the way it has been presented. I would like to see the Montrose and Brand Boulevard of Brand area separated from each other. What we have in Brand, as I said before, they are not similarly situated. So in Montrose is very different. So I would, first, I want to see this motion is separated. Then we vote on it. The way it is, is hard to vote on this. And I don't know if Mr. Garcia wants to say something.
Members of council, Councilmember Rogajanian, you can do it one of two ways. You can just have it, so that after the council's deliberated and discussed the direction you want to take, you could either do it as part of one, because it's in a resolution, so you could do it as part of one motion. as part of one motion to, to provide the direction on what you want, would like to see on Brand and what you'd like to see on Montrose. Or you could do it by separate motion, we could split, we can create two separate resolutions. It's really up to the council depending on, if there's a difference of opinion, for example, you might want to split it up into two different, two different resolutions.
So in other words, Councilmember Rogajanian, we could say that for, carve out Montrose as a extension until August and the downtown is a year? Is that what you're saying, or is that too difficult?
That's one way to do it. And if there's agreement on, for example, just for example, if that's where the council consensus is, you can do it by one resolution. But if council members have different opinions on each of those, those suggestions, then I would suggest you break it out into separate motions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, go ahead, Mr. Rogajanian.
When you say separate motion, like we say what we have in front of us, one will be for Brand, one will be for Montrose.
But again, my suggestion is to have a discussion. If you agree on both, how it should, how it should relate to Brand and how it should relate to, to Montrose, and I think you can do it as part of one motion. But if there's a difference of opinion, you can then separate them out.
Right, okay.
So then if that's the case, maybe I have to offer a motion.
My suggestion is for each councilor to kind of lay out where you...
Okay, all right, wait until we see where we are going. Thank you.
I apologize.
Okay, Councilmember Kasakian.
Let me, can I let me just say it again, because I, my microphone isn't, so yeah, my suggestion is for the council to have a discussion and lay out where each of you feel on each of the issues, and then you can decide on which motion is appropriate based on that discussion.
Right. If any of us are interested in carving it out, we can, and if not, we can just adopt one resolution. Councilmember Kasakian?
I'd be inclined to separate out the two areas where we've had this program. I think that the two areas have different needs, although ultimately having the restaurants recover is important. We have to look at all the other businesses and the makeup of the shopping park is different than the makeup of downtown. And as one of the callers mentioned, the availability of parking closer to the areas where people are able to shop in downtown makes it different than Montrose, the Montrose Shopping Park. I would like us to revisit the issue of the entire parking situation up in Montrose because as the area gets busier, as businesses are back up on their feet, there's this conflict between people who are coming to shop there, who need to park there, and the staff and employees of the businesses there and where they will park. And I can tell you as someone who has family that lives up there and I'm up there relatively often, when there is a big event, the parking spills off, spills over to some of the adjacent residential neighborhoods. That, that happens, it's, it's fact. I've seen it with my own eyes. I've partially been guilty of it myself, parking on some of the side streets when there isn't any parking available or left in any of the surface lots. So I do like the idea of extending the, the parklets and spiffing them up a bit, making them a little bit more, even more visually appealing. They're going to be around for a year and I would be okay with even some of them being permanent in the downtown, I'm fine with that, as long as the merchants are supportive of it. And in the downtown, it sounds like they are. I think any, I believe that any city that we can think of, where any of us have visited around the world, that we think of as a world-class city is one that has wide sidewalks. I've said this from the get-go. Plenty of room for people to walk, plenty of room for tables to be set out and for people to enjoy the wonderful year-round warm weather that we have here in Southern California so we can take advantage of it. I would be for waiving the fees in downtown, as I would also be for waiving the fees in Montrose to allow people to use the sidewalks within reason. But if the shopping park is not for the parklets, I would be, I would not support the extension of it to help all the businesses recover as, as quickly as they can. But I would want to waive the fees for outdoor dining in Montrose.
And in downtown?
In downtown, I would waive it as well, and I would be for extending the parklets and whatever alfresco arrangements some of the others have. Like for instance, Dacapulco has alfresco dining, but it's on their own lot and it's under a tent. I don't know if it falls into this or if you consider it, but if it's something that they feel that they could use through the summer and through the end of the year, we should work with them.
Okay.
Some, some of the merchants, Mayor and fellow council members have converted parts of their own parking to be able to accommodate the county's orders. Some of them put out a considerable outlay of capital to make this happen, and I think it would be wrong for us to simply pull that. But in the northern part, in the Montrose area, those are parklets that we've provided. So the merchants say they need the parking, I'm willing to listen to the merchants.
All right, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Najarian, Councilmember Brotman, who would like to go next?
Either way, I could go. So, let's see, I, you know, I generally, I like the parklets, I've, I've used them. And I think, you know, as Artie said, I think over time, they will accrue to the benefit of everybody around them because they do bring life onto the street and that, that traffic then visits the retail establishments. So, but what, I guess what I would, I would say is, my, my position would be, you know, extend the program as it is now, but I wouldn't go for a whole year. I would, I would try to aim for, you know, extending it beyond kind of the duration of the, you know, the pandemic emergency and maybe a little bit extra time. So I would, I would say like four months, maybe most six months, leaving it as it is, no fees, no permit fees and, and just kind of the way it is now. But during that time, I would treat downtown and Montrose differently. For the downtown, I would, I would say during this period of time, we start putting together plans to upgrade those parklets and make them into something that could potentially be permanent. We work with the Downtown Glendale Association on that and make them really beautiful. And, and also, we're going to have to address some issues. I know there's an issue at Californian Brand where there's, was a request to move a bus stop, we can't move it. There's one or two restaurants there whose outdoor dining is blocking the sidewalk. So we're going to have to figure that one out. And anyway, that's, I, I think we should kind of go ahead on that basis, so four to six months, I would say. I would kind of tend more towards the four. Use that as a period to figure out, you know, the best designs and the costs and the locations and then kind of move forward on Brand. And I would say that after the pandemic, you know, we should charge fees. It is public space, it belongs to all the residents of the city, and if we're losing parking revenue, we should make it up by, by charging, you know, our standard permit fees for those parklets. So that's what I would do for Brand.
Okay.
For Honolulu, I would say also, you know, do an extension for, for four months, again, maybe six, but I'd prefer four. But during that period, what I would say is, as Bradley mentioned and I think a number of others mentioned, let's take a, a, a hard look at that parking situation. You know, my own experience, and I, I don't want to just go by my personal experience, but my own experience has been, there's always been parking, whenever I've gone up, there's always been parking in those lots. But, you know, if, if we see longer term with Glendale College coming in there, if that's going to be insufficient, you know, maybe we have to start looking at a parking structure there or something like that to enhance the availability of parking off the street. And, and that's what we should be encouraging people to do. We should be encouraging people to park off the street and maybe we dedicate more of that on-street parking that remains to, you know, handicap spots and maybe we have to adjust the pricing so that...
Well, Mr. Brotman, let's, let's stick to the, if we can, with the resolution that we're looking at, whether to extend or to, and they can figure out the minutia of this at, when we're, during the extension, if you don't mind.
Well, I mean, I think this is part of, I'm almost done. I think this is part of the question of extending it for what reason, to do what. So I'm just explaining, I think we should extend it to do this kind of analysis.
Well...
And, and then we should come back in, in four months, say, or maybe three months or however long you think it's going to take, and then we make some decisions about both areas. And that would be my, my proposal.
Okay, so you're, you are supporting four to six months and leaning towards four months for both downtown and Montrose, correct?
Yeah.
And waiting the fees, okay.
On the assumption that we're going to be doing things, we're going to use that time for a particular purpose.
Right, yeah, exactly, exactly. Councilmember, thank you, Mr. Brotman. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I'd like to apologize in advance for any glitch in my audio and visual. I'm a little bit bandwidth challenged at the moment, so if I drop out, let me know or don't let me know or, or whatever. But I'm, I'm fairly close to where Mr. Brotman is in terms of the timing and what we need to do in that timeframe. You know, I've always said one size does not fit all, and I think this is clearly the case as you compare Brand Boulevard standards to Montrose standards. Parking is at a much higher premium in Montrose than it is down in Brand. And I've been, I've been working on parking in, in the Montrose Honolulu area since 1996, when I was on the Transportation and Parking Commission. And yes, we did have plans and we're talking about putting a parking structure that would help that out, funding got in the way. But I, you know, the opinions of the MSPA and the, the struggling business owners weigh very heavily on me. They carry great weight. So when they say they don't want it to go a year, I'm 100% with them. They say they'll accept it another four months out, and if those four months take us to August, anyway, the end of summer timeframe, I'm very happy with that. Now on Brand, Brand is a whole other issue, folks. My office is on Brand and, you know, to put it mildly, the conditions we have are ramshackle. And that's the nicest word I could put in terms of the, the style, the design, the maintenance, the upkeep. You've got pop-up tents next to false trellises, you've got lights, you've got other things, you've got step-offs off the curb. The point Mr. Kasakian made is a very, very important point about the ADA compliance. There are attorneys out there who are measuring every centimeter of distance between tables, between the doorway and a table, the width of doorways, the width of tables. So I would be very upset if some smart-ass attorney, you know, went business to business filing lawsuits against the owners. And I've defended some of those lawsuits in court. The one upside we have to defeat that is an approval by someone in the planning department to the layout of those tables, chairs, walkways, et cetera. That is an immunity and a, an ultimate defense to any of those lawsuits. So, Planning Department, if you were to approve that, that would help a lot of the potential lawsuits, abusive lawsuits, by the way, that it could be filed against the business owners and perhaps the city as well. There is a business on Brand, it's a bar. The first name is Mister, and I was so appalled one day, it was a Sunday morning or a Saturday morning, walking past their establishment, I, I nearly flipped. Glasses of alcohol left out, cigarette butts, napkins, the little garnish, you know, the, the limes and the lemons strewn all about the floor. This is the public sidewalk, by the way. It was absolutely disgusting. And I sent pictures to Phil and Ren Rubik, and if you had asked me, do we want to pull their permit, I would have voted yes at that point. Cigarette butts, totally disgusting. So I don't know who patrols that. Now, see, these restaurants now aren't just making a mess inside their facility, they're, some, some of them, not all of them, some of them are bringing it out into the street and really lowering the quality of what would otherwise have been a nice morning walk. The, one of the other problems is the turf wars. I don't know if any of you people have been there at lunchtime, but God forbid, God forbid, you sit in front of the, the All India Cafe and want to order something from Hot Wings, all hell breaks loose. You've got a waiter who says, get the hell off, off of our land, you've got to move over, this is a city sidewalk, as I tried to explain to them. And they say, no, 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 see this pop-up? This is our pop-up, it's our seating, get out. Or if you go to, you know, the next-door sushi place, same thing. So it's like the Wild West out there. We need some standards, we need some communication to these businesses, and I hope that someone can order from any of these restaurants and get service wherever they want. Otherwise, it's, you know, they're turning into little fiefdoms. So that's no good. Some of the electrical wiring scares the hell out of me. I mean, you know, you've got these extension cords, six feet, maybe seven feet over the walkway with the string of lights, and I don't know how much voltage is in there, I don't know how firmly it's secured. It looks really cheesy. The idea of outdoor dining is great. And, and everyone I've spoken to that has sat down has enjoyed those, those alfresco moments, but taken as a whole, we've got a lot of work to do. We're going to have to tighten up our game because it's, it's really, I mean, it's, it's kind of scary. Plus, as Mr. Brotman stated, there's that restaurant right at the corner of California and Wilson, I mean, California and Brand. You can't walk. I mean, you've got to look on the ground and then there's little taped arrows as to where you're supposed to walk. And, you know, you're walking in front of a, a bus stop and maybe there's a bus there, maybe there isn't, maybe people are trying to get into the bus. I understand it was a tough COVID time for us, but I think those restaurants that have sort of expanded a little bit too far need to, you know, pump the brakes a little bit and move back so we can at least have a, a walkway for people who wish, wish to walk. So, in other words, I think we need more work setting standards and supervising and let's go a reasonable period for the Brand Boulevard extension. Let's go a reasonable period and then maybe pull the plug on, on Honolulu because, as I said, I, I have great weight on the, the business owners there. And then if you want to go permanent with more permanent structures, that's fine too, but we have to do it in an organized way. So that's why I have...
So, so, so Councilmember Najarian, are you advocating for four months or six months in the downtown as well? Do you think that's enough time to, to get things...
I don't think we, my point is, I don't think we can continue the way we're doing it now for another year. We've got to revamp the system. If we're going to go up to a year, we've got to have rules, we've got to have understandings between the businesses, we've got to have cleanup provisions, we've got to have electrical inspections, we've got to have ADA permits and ADA planning done, and all those things because it's, you know, the pandemic's going to be lifted June 15th. And we're going to go to somewhat of a normalcy, there will be seats indoors for people to, to eat, which was not the case when we set up the alfresco. So, I mean, let's not extend it a year with this current situation. Let's, you want to revamp it and set standards during the next few months, fine. And then with those standards, consider extending it for, for a longer period on Brand.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Calvert, do you see any way of, of mitigating all of these issues that Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Brotman are bringing up today in four months or...
If I could make a recommendation on that is, if council agreed to extend this four to six months, whatever the timeframe would be, we could return in the interim on what a longer-term solution, I don't want to say permanent, but a longer-term solution could look like beyond that four to six months, that may be addressed these concerns, whether it's lighting, the aesthetic quality of it. And then council could make that decision whether or not to continue to extend it again and using this new template or design, I guess you could say, with the intent of satisfying these concerns and solving those challenges.
Thank you. I see Mr. Lanzafame has come up to the mic.
Just one thing that, that I would like the city council's direction on, if you do want us to look at a longer-term program. Mr. Najarian had mentioned that he would like them to be available for any restaurant use. Right now, the, the sponsor, let's say, of the parklet would be the one, they're just responsible for maintenance and cleanup. If you do impose fees and say, yes, you can use the parklet, whoever has that, whoever pays that fee, if you wanted it to be something available just like public seating, then I, I would suggest the city not... then I, I would suggest the city not impose a fee and let anybody sit where they want. But that's some direction that we'll need from you all and how you want us to do that. Maybe not today, but when we come back, as Mr. Calvert had suggested.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks, thanks to my colleagues for your excellent comments. I, I just want to say that as far as I'm concerned, I, I think we, we could use a carve-out here for Montrose because it is a different entity. However, hearing about some of the issues that are going on in the downtown, I think I'm, I'm moving in favor of leaning towards the four, four-month extension to give staff time to study this and look into this. That will give all of the businesses in Montrose an opportunity during the holiday season to hopefully have parking available or be ready for a, a successful holiday season. We have to look to the future, I think, with Glendale Community College coming in and the parking. That is something that, that we, we should be considering. I know the parking study that was done was a good one. And we had outreach meetings and all of the, the local areas that were involved in that study agreed with the study and wanted to promote the study. And, but, you know, they're always, you know, as time goes on, things change. And so I think it would be maybe good to revisit some of that, especially with the GCC coming to Montrose. So I would be in favor of agreeing that an extension of four months to give staff a, to give staff a time to, I just got a note that there's someone on the line that would like to speak. And so let me finish my comments and then we'll, we'll take that last call and that will be it. Yeah, so I'm in favor of the extension for a short period of time, four months till the end of the summer. I kind of was interested in the year because I thought, you know, well, let's see what happens when the, the weather changes and if they really use them, if they want them. Or is it just like a warm weather kind of, kind of thing? But I think using, doing the four months or until the end of August is, is fine. And also I'm in favor of waiving the fees as well. I think this is not a time to be charging or, or bringing on fees to restaurants and businesses that are, that are still struggling. Mr. Agajani, Councilmember Agajani, did you have another comment to make or are you good with, we'll, we'll get the-
I just was going to say to separate the two, as I said before, and pull the plug on Montrose after like four or five months.
Yes, I, I think we're gonna, it, it looks to me like, and I'm sensing from my colleagues that we're, we're gonna just go with the four months, but I'll wait for a-
No, but four months later, we're gonna come back and discuss this again. That's why I say separate them and let's bring to fruition the Montrose area.
Okay.
And leave the Brand for further discussion.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, let's take Mr. Milano's phone call.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes. Go ahead, you're live.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. This particular area of Brand is an area that I know very well because I walk there almost every day. Four years, or decades, I would say. And I used to have my office right above on the lot, right above the Starbucks, that is 214 North Brand. One of the things that I want to say, first of all, say is that I appreciate how the city has come through to help out all of these businesses during the pandemic. I, I think it's amazingly commendable. And I really applaud all of you for the effort in keeping all of these businesses above water during this period of time. But what concerns me is something that I think you all of you ought to pay attention to a little bit more, if I may suggest. In order to create a walkable city, Brand Boulevard is like this premier place to have a walkable area for pedestrians. Just about everywhere else, the, the, the streets are heavily congested and the sidewalks are narrow. And during the past couple of decades, maybe the last decade more than anything, there's been an encroachment, permanent encroachment into the pedestrian walkway. There's a restaurant right on the corner of Harvard and, and, and Brand that we barely have four feet for pedestrians in a very heavily congested street corner. And along the way, I've seen on Lexington and Brand the same deal. You know, it's barely enough for a person with a wheelchair to go by. But really, if we're going to create an environment where we're going to encourage people to walk, Brand Boulevard and the, and the, and the sidewalk is the fabulous place to basically promote that. And I hope that the city will seriously think before approving permanent encroachment into the sidewalk area. If you were to look at a map from the top and mark the areas available for pedestrians, it's a very narrow space. We really need to encourage all these spaces. Look how, how wonderful it is to walk at the American. There is no traffic. Or how much you enjoy going to Disneyland, there is no traffic. And these spaces really make for a quality of life issue to have, to be able to walk with families along the street. I hope you consider that in the future when you're thinking about permanent changes and encroachment to the sidewalk area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. I believe that was discussed and that staff will be looking at that in our, in the study, the future study. So after all of this discussion, are we ready for a, a motion? Would anyone like to make the motion?
Mayor Devine?
Oh, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I mean, I can make a motion. So my motion would be that we extend the al fresco program for four months or let's just say to the end of September. And we do not charge fees during that period of time. So we continue the existing structure we have now. And I would say we come back, staff comes back before the end of that period with two separate reports, one regarding Brand and addressing the issues that Councilmember Najarian raised and the one that I raised. And then a separate report on Montrose that would address the parking issues and ideally would involve some discussions with the MSPA to see if there's a, if there's a way to kind of find a win-win solution or something that they're comfortable with. So two separate reports with different focuses, but four months extension overall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Before the motion is seconded, just, so the current order expires on June 30th. So September 30th would be a three-month extension. So I don't know if you want to do three months or if you want to do four months, but I'm just laying that out for the council.
Oh.
Oh, well, I would, I would say, I'm, I'm okay with four months. And I think staff will need some time. There's, there's a lot of work involved here.
Yes.
So I would say give, give staff four months.
To October 31st?
I, that's, yeah, I'll, I'll put that in my motion.
Mr. Landsafame?
Just to, just to full disclosure, to remind you, the Montrose Shopping Park did ask for mid-August so they could prepare for the, for the end of the year, for the, the fourth quarter, I should say.
Right, right. Any, yes, Councilmember Agajani?
I would like to separate, again, the Montrose from Brand. On the motion which Mr. Brotman brought forward, I want to, the word on Montrose that this project will come to the end at the end of September, whenever we agree to be extended, the Brand to be extended.
They want it August the 31st.
Sure, well, I, you know, there's a motion on the floor. And I would just note that the motion was to have both of them expire October 30th, unless, October 31st, unless there's further council action. So if you're okay with that, then the count, somebody can second it. But if you wanted a separate date for Mont-
That would be my motion. My motion would be both of them to the end of October. And, and both of them to involve reports that come back and not, not prejudge what those conclusions are going to be.
Thank you.
I just want to bring the, I mean, this is what they ask. I mean, Montrose Shopping Center, the people they, I mean, the business owners, they are asking to bring this to an end, whether by end of August or September. I'm agreeable to that, but not to extend it and come back and start the discussion again.
True, but keep, keep in mind, the council would always have the discretion to extend it whenever, whenever it's set to expire. So again, if there's a motion on the floor, it can either be seconded or somebody can make another motion.
Can we amend the, the motion to, to carve out Montrose to end at the end of August? And then if staff needs more time, we can, for studies, we can extend that period?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I think we, we need some kind of clarification. So as Mr. Garcia mentioned, there's a motion on the floor to bring back a, and I'm going to focus on Montrose Shopping Park. To bring a report back for Councilmember Brotman's motion, there is also a conversation around completely removing the parklets in the Montrose Shopping Park and not bring a report back. From what I understand, Councilmember Najarian's comments to be.
Councilmember Agajani or-
Agajani, I'm sorry.
Agajani, you want the parklets removed?
Yeah. This program to come to an end in August for Montrose Shopping Center, as they requested with their letters and-
Let me ask you, is that a substitute motion, Councilmember Agajani?
I'm sorry, say-
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes, let's say substitute motion.
Councilmember Kasakian?
I would second that. I think that, you know, end the program in August for Montrose, reconvene with the shopping park, reconvene with the stakeholders. Let's figure out what long-term issues are there and let Montrose communicate with us clearly. The shop, they have an association, they have a Business Improvement District up there that ultimately organizes and runs the affairs of that area. And I think that for us to impose something on them is, wouldn't be correct. They've made a request for us to end it earlier and then we, we should honor that request.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the request from Montrose Shopping Park Association was to end it middle of August.
Sure, middle of August, fine, then.
We would say end of August.
Let's, let's just, yeah, let's just say end of August.
End of August, then I would, I would-
The motion, the motion is to-
So we have an amendment?
The motion, substitute motion is to extend Brand until October 31st, extend with the reports requested by councilmembers Brotman and Najarian, and then to extend Montrose until August 31st. And that would, that's it, that's the motion.
Right.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, so, and do we have a second to that then?
Yes, I will second that.
So we'll vote on that, that amendment?
Unless there's any further, unless there's objection to it.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just, just a clarification. So are we saying that with regard to Montrose, staff will not, will or will not be bringing back a report looking at the potential for an extension beyond the end of August?
No, we'll, we'll be bringing back a report on, on Montrose and on Brand, so at different, but probably on different times.
That was not, that was not Councilmember, that was not Councilmember Agajani's motion.
Right.
Oh.
I, I understood it as removing the, the-
Extension.
Kaysons and the, the-
K rails.
K rails, end of August. And that's what I'm seconding.
So to, to your question, Councilmember Brotman, yes, that's correct. It would not, that report would not come back about further extending it.
And, Miss, Councilmember Najarian, you had a question?
I was just saying, would Labor Day be a better ending date than August 31st?
Okay, I agree to that. Let's make it Labor Day, after Labor Day.
Through Labor Day.
Yeah.
I don't even know what day that falls on.
Then, we have to amend the motion then, again, Mr. Garcia.
You can just amend your own motion.
So I, I would note that Councilmember Agajani has accepted that friendly amendment and Councilmember Kasakian are, you are second, he is seconding it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Agajani?
Yes.
Brotman?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, we have a consensus. Thank you very much. And what's next, please?
Next would be adjournment.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned at 3:24. And I will call to order at 3:05. The Glendale City Council for May 25th, 2021. We have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajani?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine?
Here. What's next, please?
One would be closed session, one a conference with labor negotiators. The city-designated negotiator attending the closed session, Arubik Kalanian, Michael J. Garcia, Dylan Van Miden, Matt Doyle, John Taktayon, Sylvia Alanzas, and Michelle Flans. The names of the employee organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, and Glendale Firefighters Association. Be conference with real property-